All right, it's four o'clock. We'll try to get this meeting started and hopefully we can get out of here before six o'clock if we keep everything moving. I'd like to welcome everyone here, especially if any of y'all have not met Mr. Douglas, Mr. John Douglas, the city administrator. The great town of Kershaw, South Carolina is here, and I think he'll be speaking probably in reference to our discussion item number one here in a few minutes. So with that, would you please rise and join Councilmember Terry Graham as Allegiant in our Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we give thanks for this day, for this opportunity to meet as a council of whole. Please be with us, to guide us, to give us wisdom, to look after the best interests of all the citizens of Lancaster County. In your name, amen.
Let's move on down to our approval of our agenda. They have a motion, motion from Ms. McGriff, a second from Mr. Marstella. All in favor, raise your hand. Right hand, we have unanimous approval. Mr. Corn should be here, and I think Mr. Blackman is under the weather, so we will keep meeting, keep moving forward. We have citizens' comments, but no one signed up today, so let's get right into our discussion and action items. Six A, Mr. Marstall, we have Kershaw pool agreement proposal.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and councilmembers, at your dais, there is an updated letter of information. It's kind of highlighted in your agenda item, but we'll make sure you have some latest numbers that might be referenced today. But we did have a conversation at our last county meeting, I believe it was, talking about the pool arrangement with Kershaw, because they do have a request that we maybe make a commitment a little off a budget cycle as they consider a new partnership with the YMCA. We talked last time about potentially having this as a budget conversation when we start that in the spring and May, but the town has expressed some urgency to get a better understanding of where we might be going forward. We have some information for you about our current arrangement with the pool agreement is where basically, on average over the last six years, is about a $15,000 expense. We agree to pay operating expenses and then address any capital needs as they may arise. This new proposal from the town, I'll ask Mr. Douglas to come forward and talk about a three-year arrangement that they're looking for, and he can outline that for us for the pool. So if Mr. John Douglas, the town administrator from Kershaw, come forward, he'll outline the proposal for you.
Thank you for allowing me to come today and share this more information on this request. We are very excited down in Kershaw and southern Lancaster County about the likelihood of a YMCA opening in Stevens Park. The park is very, is a great asset, but is underused, and this will allow us to offer recreational opportunities for the southern part of the county that currently do not As I outlined in my letter on January 4th, the request is for $120,000 over three years, $40,000 a year. The Y is proposing to operate the pool 550 hours a season, whereas we've only been able to operate it for 260, and so that's the bulk of that increase that we're asking for. There is also about $25,000 worth of improvements that are needed for the pool, and that is included in the request. The request breaks down to $32,264 a year for that operational subsidy, and then $23,208 towards that $25,000 in improvements needed for the pool facility. Do want to point out that the total amount that the town is raising for this project is $800,000, and that the town itself has committed $150,000 towards the effort. I think it's also important to note that we would not need any funding from the county until after July 1. It's not that we need the funds now, we just need a commitment now so that we can put the final pieces of this puzzle together and get the pool open this coming season under the management of Y. The town will continue to own the park, the community center, and the pool. This would just be agreement with the Y to operate the pool for the town, and as a part of that agreement with the Y, the pool will continue to be open to the public. You will not have to be a member of the Y to use the pool. There will still be the daily fee opportunity that the town has offered in the past. Of course, if you are a member of the Y, then you would not have to pay to use the pool.
What else will the Y operate? Just the pool, or is the...
The community center building will be the Y, with the fitness center and the classrooms will, they will offer a variety of different classes and opportunities for citizens.
And who funds all that now? Does the town of Kershaw?
That's really where I was saying is underutilized, that it's sitting there not being used.
I know, but who funds the, is the city of Kershaw?
Like, the electric bill and...
Yeah, who funds the overhead employees and all?
It's sitting there, not users, not employees in the building.
Oh, okay.
If YMCA takes it over, there will be employees?
Right.
And who will pay them?
The YMCA.
So this is, so you're asking us to subsidize YMCA in Kershaw?
No, the pool aspect is going to be an agreement where the town pays the Y to operate the pool. Instead of us hiring our own employees directly, we're going to be entering into an agreement for the Y to manage the pool for us. And putting the puzzle together to get a Y, it seemed logical to include the pool as a part of the project and not keep that separate from the operations in the community center. And they get tired of me saying this in Kershaw, but y'all haven't heard me much, so I'll say it. I actually have a jar on my desk every time I say Chesterfield, because that's where I'm originally from. I had to put a quarter in the jar, and the jar has lots of quarters. In Chesterfield, when I was mayor, we entered into a similar agreement to bring a Y there. The town subsidized that to get it started, but then the subsidy ended once it got on its feet. I think the goal of the Y and the town here is that, going forward, can I give you a year? I can't, but the goal is that the county, the town, no one will have to subsidize this in the future, once we get it going and on its feet.
Is that Stevens Park owned by the city or that foundation? There's some kind of...
It's owned by the town.
Sports foundation or something in Kershaw, any that raises funds?
The park is owned by the town. There is the Kershaw Community Park Council, KCPC, who is actively involved in fundraising and caring for the park, and I included in one letter, a support letter from them.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Glad to meet you and welcome aboard in Kershaw. But, you know, the problem I have, I think it's a great idea, but I have a problem with us funding a private nonprofit entity as far as the Y, because that means if we give an extra, how much, and I think it varies from year to year for the last several years where we have funded the pool 50%, but now we are not only funding the pool, we are funding the Y to get on their feet. That's what I have a problem with, is the county funding the city who is, will be giving the money to the Y. I think it's a wonderful idea, but I'm just trying to get, wrap my head around, how do we go in partnership with a private business? And if that's being done, Dennis, you tell me that this is a norm, or this is the way things are going, because we have not done that, to my knowledge.
I would say one perspective you may want to consider is that, do you want to support pool services for Kershaw?
Yes.
What we've done is we've said that we wanted to mirror the Kershaw contract similar to the city's, City of Lancaster arrangement with us for Wiley Pool. This would change that, but if you're in the interest of serving pool opportunities, I don't think it really matters who the operator is in terms of...
I think in my case, it matters.
Well, so as I say, if you want to factor that, but the one thing about what they're saying is whether they run it or the Y runs it, you're providing the pool hours, but they're saying through the enhanced partnership with the Y, they're going to offer more hours, and our programs can still work there.
I think their approach should have been different. I think their approach should have been, can you fund us at a higher level for us to use as we see fit? But they're asking us to fund it in order to get the Y up and running. Remember, we are setting a precedence here, and that's the problem I have, because if this Y asks for money through the city, why can't Indianland, why can't Heath Springs, why can't the city of Lancaster up their requirements and say, okay, county, you helped Kershaw, now you, I want you to help me get something started? I just don't want to start something that we can't finish. That's all I'm saying.
Can I, I just want to ask some kind of clarifying questions. So, how many people are going to use this pool? So how many are currently using the pool, and how many are anticipated to use the pool once the expanded hours are in place?
I cannot, I can't answer that expectation on that.
So we don't know what kind of the benefit of the increase that we're being asked to put in is going to result in?
Certainly more people will use the pool, but short of, you know, going door-to-door and asking, will you call us Sunday? I don't, I don't know how to quantify that.
Okay. And how many people are in the service area that you normally would see? Has the Y kind of done an analysis of...
Yes, there's 16,000 people in the area, about 10% of which are in the town of Kershaw. I would like to clarify one thing, that none of this request is made to help the Y get on its feet. The pool is just an aspect of the overall project. The help with getting the Y project on its feet is what will take place within the community center building.
Okay.
The requests for these funds are strictly for the pool and based on increased hours. There are options. We can go to the Y and say, no, we don't want to offer more hours. We will keep the pool at 260 and, you know, reduce the, keep the amount at 15,000.
So why can't we keep it at our current level at 50%, and the Y pick up any additional cost? To keep it at whatever level they want to start with?
Members?
Yeah.
We wanted to be upfront with the county in that we were entering into a, proposing to enter into an agreement with the Y to operate the pool on our behalf. The way we are currently being reimbursed is we are calculating salaries and electric bill and chemicals and everything like that under this new arrangement. The town will just be paying the Y a flat amount to operate the pool for us, so we would not, what we would submit to you is what we're paying the Y. And if the county doesn't want that based on 550 hours, then we need to know what is acceptable as far as an amount and operations. Again, this is the final piece. This is not to support the Y getting off the ground in Kershaw. This is simply the operation of the pool and the changes that the towns that...
They will get off the ground regardless of whether we support them or not? Are you saying that?
The pool is an aspect of it. It's got to be resolved. We've got, we've got to know if the county is going to continue to support that pool or not.
At present level or at the $40,000 level?
At whatever level you all are, feels in the best interest of all the citizens.
So what do we pay City of Lancaster?
50% of...
And what's that dollar amount?
I don't have the last bill that we sent to the city, but roughly 30, is it?
There.
So roughly, I mean, it's kind of the same arrangement where it fluctuates year to year, but the city of Lancaster pays us, so we're in a different relationship where we're the pool owner, in this case, the town is, but roughly for our last year's expenses, the city of Lancaster paid the county $30,000 to offset the expenses for the Wiley Street Pool. But I would say, I think your conversation, as you're thinking about this, whether it is 40,000, 20,000, I go back to the original point, do you want to support pool services? Don't think about who the operator is. It's the town who owns it, the town is responsible for it. It allows us to have some of our program participants free use a pool, so do you still want to support some type of pool operations Wiley and at Kershaw?
My answer, my answer is yes, I do.
And then what level? And I actually like under this proposal, if we end it at three years, I think that's a benefit for the county if you want to lower it.
And I don't, I don't think I want to end the requirement to do it, because the argument in the beginning was that Kershaw is a part of the county. We need this recreation for our children to be able to swim. The fact of the matter is, where I'm having a problem is the partnership, because that's going to start a whole another conversation. Now, if we were to say we're going to support it at the 50% level that we have always, I have no problem with that, but I have a problem with, and once they get that whatever percentage, they can do with what they want to do with it, and, you know, but I just don't feel comfortable going into saying we're going to give 40,000 for the Y to be able to operate it at their level and not our level.
The pool will probably service youth that can't run to their neighbor's house and jump in the pool. The city pools like Lancaster and this would give opportunities to a part of our population that...
That can't afford, yeah. And that was our whole reason, is because we had kids who couldn't afford to pay those high fees to get into a private or pool, but we wanted to make sure in Kershaw and Lancaster that they had access to both pools.
And the town is very much adamant and committed to, in the agreement with the YMCA, that that opportunity continues. You will not have to be a member to use the pool.
How many, how many folks are using the pool right now? Let's go back to that number. Out of 260 hours that are currently open, how many people are using it?
This being my first year, I apologize, I don't know, but I can certainly gather that data and get it for you.
Okay, and then for, if I'm looking at the amounts correctly, so the town is going to put in 150,000, and the county is being asked to put in 120,000 over the three-year period?
The town has committed 150 towards the 800 needed. The ongoing pool operations would, that number, that 150 could be more, depending on what you all decide, but yes.
Okay, and then out of the 120 that we will be providing, that includes approximately 23,000 of the 25,000 of the full pool facility improvements? So the county is paying for the pool facility improvements pretty much 90%?
That would be correct. And again, the town is providing funding for other aspects of the overall project, but yes.
Okay.
And again, 10% of southern Lancaster County resides in the town of Kershaw.
Okay, and then if we were, I guess from my perspective, just going through Ms. McGriff's kind of questions, if the Indianland YMCA also wanted to have a pool and have that kind of be subsidized by the county, is the county going to be open to that?
Well, when they were building the YMCA in Indianland, they came to us and asked for that, and we turned, the council turned it down, I know a number of years ago. I don't remember the year when they built it, but, remember Harper? But they asked for money then about the pool. I don't know if they got their pool or not, but they had asked for some money. You remember?
They have a pool, but...
They have a pool. The money that they were asking for was to build an additional pool.
Okay.
Yeah, they were going to build an outdoor pool that could be used for aquatics.
I know.
And the pool they have now is not a, like, it's not what your normal pool is. They use it more for seniors, for rehab stuff and things like that. I mean, kids do get to come in, I think, but it's not the normal pool that you would normally see.
All right, before this comes to council, is there any additional information, council?
I have one more question. The pool in Indianland, do you have to have a membership?
Yes.
Any information you'd like the county or the city of Kershaw to have? I know Mr. Louise has requested usage, anything, any other information?
I'd like to know about the city, what we're paying.
Yeah, what we're paying the city of Lancaster, because, you know, we need to...
Can you find out how many hours it's open?
We need to be equitable with all of them.
This will be access, Heath Springs citizens will be able to use this.
Absolutely. All of southern Lancaster County, and quite honestly, I'm sure it's a draw, as folks come from Kershaw and Chesterfield counties, I'm sure.
And I would, I would like to know what their proposed charge will be for use of the pool, for, you know, if somebody takes their kids down there, hey, is it $1, $2, or $25? If we could have that, I think.
Because we fund the pool so the costs can be affordable for families.
Yeah, we'd like the same thing for Lancaster City Pool, what would charge us? Just some information.
And I think for sure the town is on the same page as you all are, as far as that goes.
Any other information, this town? All right.
Well, can I, just one thing for clarity, is if we could have some sort of idea or answer by sometime in March, again, to get everything going for this...
We'll break it before, what's today, the...
We can put on a February agenda or March agenda if you want to finalize this.
Okay.
And is this, this is going to come through resolution?
Resolution.
So it'll be just, just be one reading?
It could be a res, excuse me, you have two options. You could fund it outright, the original, if you do a one-year, a three-year program, the first year we could pay for it out of current funds, a fund balance, or you could make the commitment through a resolution that we adopted as part of the, included in the budget process, to make the commitment for 2025.
He said he wouldn't need the money in July anyway, right?
Right, and that was my next point, we don't need the funding until...
So we would have time to change our budget.
You could do a resolution of intent.
It's got to be a three-year...
We can commit funds for future council.
But this one would be July 1.
But it's got to be a three-year commitment and not a annual commitment, right?
Everything is on annual. I mean, yes, there's a commitment, but it's on an annual distribution.
Annual budget, but a three-year commitment?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll bring it back up in March for a resolution or payment, but for a resolution, it will be included in the budget, July 1.
Can we put it on the second meeting or February, first meeting? Go and get it resolved, the sooner the better.
Absolutely, that would be wonderful.
Yep, we'll put on the second meeting in February.
Unless February is a no and March is a yes, then we'll take March.
Get answered that question. Thank you, Mr. Douglas.
Thank you.
Let's move on down. We have a update of our parks and recreation, Mr. Chris Cloudon.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Cloudon and Mr. Jason comes, this deputy director comes forward. Want to highlight, this is an opportunity, as we had some time on the agenda, there's been a lot of conversation, a lot of activity in parks and recreation about facility use, certainly with our new facilities onboard, but really looking at different programs and their staffing, wanted to give the opportunity for them to give you all an update. And they've got a lot going on, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Chris Cloudon, the department director.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to come up and give you a quick update, and maybe even a little peek into the future, kind of what we're looking at here. So, there's a few pictures kind of mixed in here, so you get a sense of the programs. We're trying to, just as an aside, trying to do a better job of documenting the programs, the activities, what we're doing, so we have a bit of a history and can do more storytelling with everything we're doing, from athletic staff to school, special events. But to get us started, just a really quick snapshot, personnel side, we have 79 year-round people, most of them are part-time, as you can see, and of the 10 to 28 full-time, 10 of them are maintenance crew, Cliff West staff. So the rest is, you can see there, five athletic staff, they're the ones that manage all of our adult youth programs, the facility managers that are full-time are at Springdale and Indianland Rec Center, and then administration is our senior staff. We have two full-time custodians, one full-time after-school coordinator, which is at Indianland Rec Center, and then we have a vacant position there. And then on the property side, we're a little over 300 acres, 318 acres. We're still tallying some of that up, to be honest, to get a more accurate number, but we know we're at least 318. And in that is 39, 39 ball fields throughout the entire county, 12 playgrounds, which we are now conducting audits and inspections on, which we've never done before, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that as we go. And then obviously the four rec centers, and we have several different shelters spread throughout. Jason's going to take this part.
All right, so one of the things that we tried to focus on this year, being obviously both of us new, we wanted to make sure that we actually do a lot more with staff learning what their job actually entail, not from a standpoint of where we are currently, but where we would like to be. So, one of the biggest things for us is trying to get staff actually certified. We want to get them certified in the craft that they're actually already in. So one of the things that we actually kind of went through was all of our athletic staff are now certified youth sport administrators. That's a nationally recognized certification, and it teaches them how to not only run athletic programs, but how to evaluate them, how to deal with problems, and then also how to implement things that would basically... implement things that would basically make our department better. So again, we're trying to be on, I would say, on the right side of learning, if you will. We want to be trendsetters and not trend followers, but currently we are trying to follow some trends to, again, to get us to where we want to be. Another thing that you can look on there and see is our certified playground safety inspectors. Again, like Chris just mentioned, those are new, that's a new thing that we did. Those are, again, nationally recognized certifications and that means that our staff can go out and evaluate our playgrounds. There are a good amount of playgrounds that we have in the county, but we want to make sure that we're having those playgrounds evaluated on a regular basis. We're going to implement changes that actually make it safer for our kids as well as for their, their parents to be, to be out there on these playgrounds. Another thing that we have that I would like to bring up would be, oh, it would be the certified, yeah, certified park and recreation professionals. That's another thing that we're working on, trying to get our staff certified. That certification, again, will teach our staff how to run programs and not just in a recreation setting, but also in the athletic field. And then also teaches them how to be better professionals for the park and recreation family, if you will. And then the next one, excuse me, the next one would be affiliations and sanctions. As you can see, we are, we are affiliated with a lot of different, a lot of different organizations, one being Dixie. Everyone knows that we're Dixie softball. If you don't know, then you do now. NFL flag, we actually just started that this year. I'm sure some of you got some calls about all the parking that goes along with that because, again, we had a huge turnout with that. So again, that's something that we're, we're brought to Lancaster County and the people that are here love it. Another one that we have is the SERPA, that's the state organization. NRPA, we're getting more involved with that. That's the national organization, which is National Park and Recreation Association.
I've, I've got a question. Tell me how, how and where do we use the safe needle disposal? I mean, when and how important is that?
Well, I was just going to mention that, actually, because that's something that came up a few months ago. It came about because when our staff goes down, maintenance staff goes down to Springs Park and does the cleaning up there, particularly on Mondays after weekends in the summer, they were coming across a lot of trash and they happened to mention having to dispose of needles. And in further discussion, we realized nobody's been trained on safe needle disposal. We worked with Ryan Whitaker in risk management, all of our maintenance staff went through it. We've been in touch with Clay to talk about the sharp bins, so we have sharp bins in all the trucks. They have needleproof gloves, they collect them, dispose them, and then when they build up to a certain quantity, EMS will come and dispose of the needles because you have to be registered in order to properly dispose of any kind of needle in a safe way.
I, I knew it had something to do with the parks, but I'm glad to see that we are being proactive when it comes to that.
Yeah. We, it, it, it all goes towards creating a more professional staff and making sure they're trained in any kind of category we can come up with. This will be a bigger initiative as we continue to go on any topic that we feel is going to really benefit our staff, which then obviously in turn benefits the department and, and the citizens of the county.
A question. Our technology has changed and I know we have, I saw a presentation on these camera systems that the sheriff's department encourages, like subdivisions to use, I think it's called the flock, flock camera. Are, are we looking at any camera systems or for parks like that that are secluded? I know there, you know, there's a cost to this, but one person getting something from a needle is bad, but, you know, you can tell who's going in and out of these places at night.
We're working on that with our facilities right now. When I say the recreation centers, we're working with IT on that. So the three of the four recre, because Indianland already has it, so Beaufort AJ and Springdale are going to have new state-of-the-art systems installed, internal and external. And then we have talked about Springs Park, we have talked about the concerns down there and we have had conversations with the sheriff's department. So that is something that has been discussed and we need to pursue a little further.
Well, we do have cameras, they're just not updated, right?
No, what we're saying is only one of our facilities has cameras. We're working on complex wide cameras at some of our other locations. The Springs Park, the flock cameras are just vehicle license plate readers. And so the sheriff is really in tune to that one around the county. And so he's identified Springs Park in particular, but our staff has been astute to recognize we need to have some more video within the facilities and external within the properties of our rec complexes and our other properties. So they've got a plan that they've been working with IT about an overall security plan, that they've done a little initiation and implementation.
Well, it's certainly concerning that you're finding needles, especially at Springs, because it's a remote park and that would suggest very strongly that it's illicit drugs that are being used, the needles used.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, the staff, especially in the summertime, they find, they got a lot of work to do, I'll just say, on Mondays when they go down there after the weekend in the summer. And then they, they, they try to be intentional about it, but one, this was brought to our attention, we acted on it right away and, you know, we'll, we'll continue to have conversations about the flock camera and other, other methods to kind of put in place.
Okay.
Any other questions on that?
Actually, I want a clarification question on that. So they're coming in and cleaning on Monday morning, so are the needles being left behind Friday evening? They're there Saturday and Sunday? We don't know?
Yeah, we don't, we don't know the frequency. It's a very good question. The unfortunate reality of the situation is we don't have the staff to cover, I mean, we have 10-person maintenance crew for 318 acres, so.
Well, yeah, I'm just thinking, the risk for our children, like that, that seems like a big risk.
One of the goals, honestly, is to have more staff that works the weekends. I mean, right now, the, the staff that works the weekends are, are rec, are athletic staff or the youth sports programs. So being able to have somebody, kind of like a Mecklenburg County situation, that acts in essence like a park ranger, for lack of a better way of saying it, that can then go around and patrol the parks or check in on the parks on the weekend would, would be very helpful.
Are they leaving these needles in the restrooms or are they just laying out there?
There ain't no restrooms.
Yeah, we'll have to get...
I wouldn't know.
I'll get, they, they leave a lot of other things in the restrooms, that much I can tell you. I'll get clarification from Cliff on that. I'm not sure if they're finding them in restrooms, under the shelters, in the wooded areas, so we'll, we'll get a little bit more clarification on that.
I've been in those restrooms, eh, I wouldn't go in those restrooms, Billy. I got a question. But what does the sheriff say about this?
He, he's concerned about it. We've talked about it. He, he's recommended the cameras as, as, as part of the conversation and a, a plan of action down there to at least, when we see something, kind of after the fact, we can go back and look at the, the license plate at least and, and see if there's something we can track down.
So he hasn't suggested any spot checks by the sheriff department?
They, they're doing them, yes, they are doing them.
Well, is it possible with helping is put up some kind of video surveillance on property, just signs up that might deter something, you know, they don't know where the cameras are at, but...
Right. We can, we can certainly look at the signage, the, the cameras piece, we'd have to talk to Scott and his crew to see what we can do, just because there's not a lot from the power, from a power perspective down there. So that we'd have to see how something like that can be run and powered, monitored.
Yeah. You know, that's how your house alarm systems work. You got your signs outside and hopefully a crook sees that sign, he won't break in your house. That's why I was wondering if signs would help with that, you know, that you got security.
Well, we are taking a bigger look at, we keep going down different paths here. We keep, we're taking a bigger look at all the signage in all of the parks because, quite frankly, we're inconsistent on brand, we're inconsistent on message. We've got all types of shapes, sizes, colors, fading, and everything needs a, a facelift from a signage standpoint. So that would be, that would be part of it.
Okay.
I got, I got one question. There's, there's some private soccer clubs or, or, or agencies, I'm thinking about Land United in particular. Are you working with them and how are you updating them because that has a, had a very rocky history?
Oh, we're, we're aware of it, yes, sir. We are, we've had several conversations in the last week about them. We've had a meeting to discuss their concerns, we've had several meetings to discuss their concerns. So yes, we are working with Arma and his, and his, his folks. Right now, they are scheduled for all, the requests that they've made are scheduled out through the first two weeks of February with the understanding that once we have a better idea of what our spring registration for soccer is going to look like, then we'll be able to work with them to give them additional time. But as we've instructed and shared with them and other groups, our programs come first, our kids take precedence, and then we try to, we fill in as best we can with the available hours and days that we have, that we can, we can share from a rental standpoint. But yes, we are, we are in very weekly contact with them. Our new facility management coordinator, rental coordinator is Natalie Bowers and she, if not at least once or more a week, is communicating with Arma on their needs.
Good. And what about the school system? You think it'll ever be a more cooperative, or if you want to use that word, with the schools?
That's the goal. We hope to get cooperative with them. We've, we've actually built a little bit of a relationship with the principal at Harrisburg regarding access to their parking lots when we need them on the weekends. So we feel confident that we can, we can move the needle in the right direction with the school system as well.
Oh, excuse me, is that the president superintendent sitting back there?
No, that's Terrence Barr of Stormwater.
Oh, Terrence.
It looks like a superintendent.
Let me put my glasses on.
I know, is that a compliment, Terrence?
It is a compliment.
Terrence, I was mistaking you for the public. What is he, idiot?
Terrence just got promoted.
Well, council members, I am pleased to report that the new superintendent, Dr. Fitzpatrick, is on board. I met with him yesterday. I did raise the issue of joint use and facility and planning. He is planning on attending our quarterly elected officials luncheon on February 8th or 9th. And so you can be sure to ask him then about his policy and philosophy, but he did communicate with me that when he was at the Greenville Schools, he worked under a policy with open facilities where the public was encouraged to use the school facilities.
So don't, don't show up, Terrence, because I get y'all mixed up.
All right, go ahead, Chris.
Okay. So on the operation side, some, some highlights so far from this fiscal year. We've upgraded the lighting systems at three of our recreation centers, as well as the Wiley Street Pool. They are now all energy-efficient LED lighting. That was through a partnership with Duke Energy where we shared in the expense, but we did not have to cover the full expense. And over the next five years, it's projected to save us about $85,000 in utility expenses. So we feel pretty good about that and it's just a better look and feel in our buildings too, quite frankly. The ADA passenger bus that we, we requested for this fiscal year has come in, so we're looking forward to putting that to some use. Lighting upgrades that were requested in this fiscal year are starting at Indianland Recreation Center. We're changing out the, not the, not the poles, but the actual light systems to get them a little bit more current. They're an older system, so they're being retrofitted. And then we have three ball fields at Walnut Creek that are having lights installed that are going to be brand new. And so that will save us money because we will not be renting light towers anymore, which we've been doing for many, many years. And this will all be on a system that is, we can control, our staff can control from our phones and from our computers as far as turning them on and off and scheduling them, so it'll be a good resource for us. The annex end of renovation is shaping up. We are looking at potentially, we just found this out today, a potentially completion date of March 6th. So once that gets a little closer, we'll talk about a ribbon cutting and opening for that building also. And then on the playgrounds, the playgrounds are going to be a big initiative going forward. We've, we've got some work to do on the playgrounds. They're obviously needed, they're a good resource for us and for our folks, and especially for our children. But some of the, some of them are the original playgrounds. They're definitely worn, they're used, they, they need a little bit of TLC. So as a result of our staff that are now certified on the safety side, we're going to do monthly inspections, we're preparing a report right now that will lead to a bigger discussion for next fiscal year as part of our request to have a separate line item for playground maintenance funding, to be honest. It's, there's just a lot that goes into it, from the safety features, from the equipment, from how much mulch is in there, fall zones, it's very, very technical, but we've, we've have some, we have some things to work on there and improve those assets for us.
I'm sorry, just a quick question. On the special event space for the Indianland Rec Center, how big is that going to be? What's the capacity for that?
Oh, that's a good question. I'm going to have to get back to, I don't know what the capacity, I don't know if that's been determined necessarily.
Yeah, there's two multi-purpose rooms and so they cannot be combined, but yeah, we don't have the, because one has a kitchen heating area, the other one doesn't, so we haven't determined capacity yet.
Yeah, but we'll, it'll give us more flexibility for like senior programs that we can program in there without necessarily maybe interrupting anything inside the rec center. We can use it as a rental space for community groups looking to do community meetings or parties and different special events. So it just increases our flexibility and it'll serve as a bit of a revenue source for us.
Yeah, it, I just know in Indianland, there's a need for event spaces like that, so, and larger spaces are usually more in demand.
And having that separate from the building too also gives us more flexibility for things on weekends and evenings that when the center's closed, then...
Still accessible.
Yep, yep, yep.
The expanded senior programs, what do you mean by that? I know that I have had several people send me emails wanting to use the rec center, pretty much like a council of aging.
We've, we, I've talked to Kylie several times, so we're, we're in touch with Kylie and we are going to, ideally, we will continue to work with them, build that relationship so that they can look to move some of their programming into that annex as well. But it's something we discussed a while ago and as we get a little closer here, I'll follow back up with her again and continue that conversation.
Okay.
Okay. So right now, if you look at, at your screen, you can actually see our athletic participation has actually increased. And now, one of the things that I can tell you about our athletic programs is we were, we challenge our staff to understand our capacity. That's the biggest thing for us. What can we actually provide? But we also want to provide these programs at, with quality. That's the biggest thing for us. Quantity is not really something that we're trying to strive for, it's more quality. So with that being said, we're looking at our practices and what can we, and again, for kind of circling back to the Land United. If Land United or another private organization wants to use our facilities, okay, well, what can we offer them, but also still not taking away from what we're, we're offering our people? So if you look at baseball, again, this is just for last year versus this year, oh, well, two years ago, actually, I guess you would say, well, no, last year. So we, for baseball, obviously we increased slightly. For our basketball, we've increased exponentially. And again, this, these are some of the numbers that we have right now, but our goal is to at some point probably maybe reduce our numbers. And when I say reduce our numbers, obviously not drastically, but we will have to cap it off at a lower number, just because we want to provide quality. When it comes to staff, we don't have the staff, we don't have the, what is it? We don't have the umpires or the officials to be able to, to run all these games. Because again, we're talking about for basketball alone, we have 96 teams, 96 teams countywide. And 40, I believe it's 43 or 45 of those teams are in Indianland. Right. So, excuse me, so with that being said, we don't have the staff to be able to run those, now again, from a quality standpoint. Now again, our goal is to, again, to provide quality, we don't really care about having everyone and anyone in our program. The goal is to, again, to provide a quality program to the people that are here so that that way they have a, a great experience.
When you define quality, give me a little bit more information on what, how do we determine quality here?
Yes, ma'am. All right. So for us, what we've done in the past is we've had kids, teams that have come in and maybe practice maybe once a week, if that, or sometimes once every two weeks, if that. Now, for us, I feel like if you're trying to practice, you should have a couple, a couple of practices a week. Now, for us, we don't have the space to be able to do that, we don't have the staff to be able to open the building, we don't have those things. So what we're doing is we're allowing people to basically just get on a team and just show up. So thus, it leads to dissension between the parents or between the coaches, or they feel like this coach is getting, giving preferential treatment because he or she was able to have practices.
Well, one question I did have from a parent is, what of the rules, policy requirements should be given to them in writing instead of telling them, because they have nothing to refer back to?
Yes.
And I couldn't refer them to anything because I didn't really know. So I said I was going to speak to you guys about policy, regulations, whatever parents need to... need to, adhere to. Could we probably have, possibly have it in writing?
Yes, ma'am. So we have all those things in writing, and what I've actually stressed to our, our athletic staff is to ensure that we actually start putting those things online. For years, for some reason, they haven't, which I can't understand why. But again, it goes back to what we're talking about, teaching our staff what, the right way versus the wrong way of doing things. So what we've actually started doing is we're working with the marketing department, and we're actually going to put all those things online.
That'd be great.
So it will be a coaches' corner, it would also be a parent's corner, they'll have the rules on there, they have the Dakota Conduct on there. The goal is to have is, I want to give them too much information so that way they can say they have enough.
But at least something parents can refer to when it's questioned.
Absolutely. And we're also going to be sending out emails as well with, with those, with the information in there as well.
Okay.
Again, the goal is to be transparent and make sure that everybody understands exactly what we're, what we're asking them to do, as well as what they can expect from us as an organization.
You, you say you limit the numbers, so you have a sign up sheet. Do you have any idea how many, if you had a unlimited resource, would, would, would sign up?
If I...
Is that how you do it, first of all? Is that how, you just have a sign up sheet and once you make, you cut it off?
Yes, sir. So what we do is we set registration numbers on rec desk. So that's our registration software. So we will set a maximum and a minimum. Maximum being the, the number that we could actually take, and then the minimum would be the, the least amount of numbers that we would take to be able to even have a program. So for us, what I've tasked our staff with doing is breaking it down to, so basically whenever you come in and you're a coach, you have so many practices, your practices are set on this day, this time, and that way, whenever you get ready to have a team, you know exactly what your season will look like.
So how many kids are not able to sign up? I guess is what I'm asking.
Gotcha. So right now, the number that we have for, we're, again, we're going through each sport. So we're going for the south end, as well as for the north end, and then a total of how they're going to structure them. So with that being said, I can tell you, we can probably have to circle back and give you each individual number, but we have set those numbers coming, moving forward, because again, our athletic staff has started working on that.
The, the spring sports registration is open right now, so we would, give us a few more weeks to get a sense, but last fall, we had a waitlist of over 300 kids for our fall sports.
That's a lot.
And that's, and we, and we cut, we cut that off. We stopped, we stopped.
Oh, it was more than 300?
Yes.
And where, where were those kids mostly from?
We'd have to go back and look at that. I don't, we didn't break that part of it down, councilman.
Okay.
That would be useful to know when we're talking about budgets, how many kids are not being served and which areas not being served.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a slippery slope for us because in the past, we've had it where, I mean, you see our numbers went up, we're talking about quality over quantity, but yet our numbers are up and we're serving more kids, there's a need for it, we know that, that there's a need for it. But we've also asked our staff to understand what our capacity is from a field, from a ball field standpoint, a court standpoint, you know, and, and that's, it's, it's probably going to be about this, not much more than this. Because the other side of it is when, so Indian Land, for example, any, or Springdale, when we're running our basketball league during the winter, those gyms are shut down on a Saturday pretty much all day, which means the public's, the public, you can't just come in and play open gym basketball in the winter during basketball season. Because we have that many kids, we have that many teams who accommodate, I mean, we're going from 8:30, 9 o'clock in the morning on a Saturday through 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
And here's, here's one to prove it, y'all, my grandbaby.
So is it, is it more a need for facilities and staffing?
Yes.
So you have, I would imagine, an equation for how, how many teams you would need, how many individuals you need to sign up per umpire, per Parks and Rec team member, so that it comes out at least even, so you're not in the hole, right?
As far as when you say...
Like when you're budgeting for it. So if you're saying, if we hired a new director, we could get X amount of the 300 that are in line waiting and start servicing them, if we also had facilities that could serve them?
Yes, I was, yes, sir. So we, it's, yes, it's very, we'll have to go down rabbit hole with it, but yes, absolutely, yes, sir.
You can make, you can make the calculations and say, if we had this director out of the 300 kids that are not being served, we could add this many.
Yes.
And then we can make a separate calculation and say, if we had facilities, this is how many kids we could serve in that facility with this staffing level.
The first thing we would look at would be the staff, well, you would look at that staff member, because the staff member obviously has to extend hours and things of that nature, so we'd have to use the pre-existing locations that we have. And then after that, we would actually add in, yes, sir.
So that's when it becomes more important to be, have a cooperative spirit with the school system, because they have the facilities.
That's, that's exactly why I was asking the question.
But you also have to have sponsors and volunteer coaches, and that can be a challenge.
It can be a challenge.
If you ain't got volunteer coaches and, and sponsors, you ain't going to have teams.
That's part of an overall programming and marketing campaign and kind of talking about what the needs are, because I, I would imagine that most people don't realize how many kids are not being served, and I don't think they realize how many volunteers are needed in order to do that.
And it's not just because of facility, as you say, it's because if teams don't have coaches, they can't play. I think that's the situation we were in last year, because our team didn't have a coach in order to, to play.
As part of our budget process, I would, I, I would like some numbers from other counties or cities that run rec departments. What's their commitment? Because when I got on here, I was shocked how little, the, the rec department, I don't know, what percentage of your money do you raise now? It was like 75% they raise with fees and sponsorships, and they, they, you can't, you know, you can't do your jobs if you're having to be fundraisers all the time. I mean, I understand that they, you know, we, we have gotten, we, we need to see what, how we stand and, you know, what we need to look at. I know we have limited resources.
We need to up our investment in our children, and I think that's what we've always said is, we know that we're not where we're supposed to be, but we need to seriously look at investing more in our young people.
Funding per person in this county, when 10, 11 years ago, what, but like 12 or 13 dollars per...
It was, it was, it wasn't good, I don't remember, but it was pitiful.
It would, it would be helpful that as we go through the budget process, if you all, when you're presenting your department needs, to show, and it's very similar to what the sheriff's office has done, what the fire department had done, saying, if we increase this many employees, we can get this amount more served. That, I think, would be a calculation that I think everyone on this council would appreciate, because it gives us something to, to aim for.
And, you know, as far as facilities, we know how long it takes to, to build a park and the cost, but, you know, we can, we know what the school systems have, and I think it would be helpful if they are going to be cooperative with us, that we, we know what facilities we would ask to use.
And have a, you know, build, build that partnership back, because I don't know whether it's to the level we want it to be. Because I think we came with the new agreement that, that's going to cost us if we use it. We've got to come to some sort of agreement that it won't, it won't be to that level as far as financing.
I think we were building, trying to build a relationship, but you were having school shootings, then the pandemic came along, and so, you know, they were very hesitant about, you know, lending their facilities out. And I think the, there's negotiating, you know, hourly rates and...
Hmm, that, that ain't going, that's not going to work. Yeah.
Yeah, there's also a new superintendent now that I think will change the, the atmosphere.
I just, I'd just like to throw a word of caution out there. Getting access to the school system is not the panacea we think it's going to be, because you just heard that it's great to have those facilities available, but we got to have personnel to send over there, and we're already short of personnel.
And that's what I think we would talk about.
I think we all recognize that.
We used to say that, how can we make that happen with additional personnel? If we could, if we were able to partner with the school district, what will it take to make it happen?
Oh, for me, behind, behind public safety, what we do for the citizens of our county is standing right there. I mean, that's...
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
All right, we have a few more things here to kind of swing through for you. This is...
I'm, I'm sorry, but just when you go back to that slide that we were just at, we're showing the actual usage, it would be helpful, to Mr. Graham's point, to kind of see who is not being served and when it got cut off, so that we can see what the potential is as well.
Yeah.
Would it be, would it be more helpful to see the registration dates, like when we cut off registration, and then the people that were on our waitlist after that date?
Correct. Yep.
So you're just saying the third bar with waitlist?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think... A third bar, either at the top, you got one colored that signifies, you know, this is the kids that were accepted, and then in black above there is all the kids that didn't get in.
Yep. Perfect.
And I, and I think, I think it's important if you stack them on top of each other, because then we can act, you can better visualize how, how far behind we are, or how short we're falling.
I don't see kickball there.
I don't see, I don't see pickleball, but there's a wrong age group.
We, we got you, I promise you. The staff wants to run the, staff wants to run the Vlasic classic, so, you know, we're working on, we're working on pickleball.
Yes.
All right, so field utilization, this is something that has come up in light of some of the conversations with Indian Lands and others. So we ran this report, and to be honest with you, we still need to tweak it a little bit because there's a lot of bells and whistles in the software system that people aren't familiar with. But really quick overview, you can see the total hours being used and how much it's grown. What's interesting is this is only through 6:00 PM, because the software system won't allow us to track anything after 6:00. We have seen, yeah, yeah.
Need to update the software system.
We've, 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 we've got a lot of things we're, we're working on rebooting. But the, the point is, you, you see a lot of growth here, a lot of usage on these fields, especially the new ones, Harrisburg and Heath Springs, even Buford gets a lot of use, we get a lot of, of community use out there with different individual teams, not necessarily leagues. Harrisburg is probably one of the more popular ones. We also have groups that just show up and use it on a regular basis, that we're trying to control and educate on the process, the system, making sure they rent stuff out, they understand what the rules are and the process for doing it.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to, so do they have to reserve those fields, or can people come in?
If, it, so if you wanted to go out with your family or some friends and just drop in and, and, and play on the field, you can. But when, when we prefer to do the rentals as if it's like an organized team that's going to do it on a regular basis, this way, they know that they have that field every Sunday at 1:00 for their practices.
But if they're willing to take the risk, they don't have to do that?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to be clear about that, because it is a public facility, we don't have to require them to reserve the spaces.
We don't, you'd prefer to do it just so it eliminates any confusion, any altercations, any issues, so, especially from a team standpoint. But individual groups in the neighborhood, again, public park, go on down, throw the ball around, kick the ball around, absolutely.
Well, they, they also need to understand that if they're there and they're, you know, they haven't made prior arrangements, when somebody comes that's scheduled to use that, then they need to vacate the facilities.
Correct, yep.
And it's also synthetic turf, so it's, it's, it's got certain rules and regulations on it.
Yes, they do. Yes, they do. We're working on clarifying them a little bit more, too. So we, this will be something that is going to be very helpful for all of our staff to really understand. Obviously, we've got to expand past 6:00, because that's the bulk of the time that our fields get used, is between 5:00 and 9:00. And everybody always wants to be on the field the same day of the week at the same time, which is always the fun challenge for our staff to, to work through. Everybody wants 6:00 to 8:00, Monday through Thursday. And in this, you know, it's a, it's a growing, we're figuring it out. Heath Springs and Harrisburg have obviously shown a light that there's a big need, right? And so we're still kind of playing with it a little bit to understand the different communities, the different groups that want access, and how do we balance that with ours? So this will be very helpful for us as we continue to go through this year in particular, and with Natalie and her position, she's only been in there about two months, so, but we feel good about the direction we're going. Any other questions on that, field use? Funding opportunities, this is just something we, we put together for today, was understanding different sources of funding beyond just like, obviously, what we get annually. And there's obviously updating the fee schedule, which will be discussed more in our budget presentation, and consolidating that a little bit, making that a little bit clearer, so basically cleaning that up some. But we also feel like there's a big opportunity for grants. Outdoor recreation, playgrounds, yes, some on the athletic side, some on the facility side, but a lot of it is outdoor related. And so we think there's definitely opportunities there to go, and whether it's for programming or facility enhancements, those are, that's something we're going to spend more time on to, to try and pursue dollars there. The sponsor program, we are in the process of rebuilding. We want to treat it more of a, a business and less of a transactional interaction with some of our partners. Right now, we do a lot of quarterly phone calls, and it just gets to be a little bit much for our staff to track that kind of stuff, as well as on the other end, somebody's getting the phone call in every three, four months. We'd like to transition some of that to more year-round partnerships, where somebody has X number of dollars from a sponsorship standpoint, and we can guarantee them signage, branding on uniforms, they can come out and do an activation at any of the games or championship. There's different ways we can give them value, so we're, we're in the process of rebooting that a little bit as well. And that would just be, that wouldn't just be with athletics, it would be all of our special events. It's, this is a kind of a whole 360 look at how we do that piece. And then obviously naming rights, which we now have the ability to pursue. And there's already some interest on, from, from some local businesses on the naming rights side, particularly tied into the regional park. So we feel pretty good about how that's going to progress and the opportunities it's going to create for us.
I was in Greenville back in December, and the arena there had, is sponsored by the local hospital system, but then each entrance has its own sponsor, so they're double dipping.
Yeah, it depends on how creative we want to get. Lot of, lot of options to pursue there.
I think we need to, in the next few months, is go ahead and, and come up with a name for our regional park, because...
Well, the McGriff complex sounds pretty good.
Well, we, we all have a McGriff complex.
I think you had to be deceased for five years. She was working on that.
Hopefully you won't, that one, Johnny. All right, Jason's going to give an overview of what our current division, overall department structure looks like and versus, you know, some, some growth opportunities and how we want to reposition some things.
Hello, I'm back. No, so if you're looking at our facilities, how they are currently, we have one full-time staff member that is a facility manager at each, well, I'm sorry, two of our recreation centers. Now there, I don't have to tell you, but that is a real challenge when you're trying to program. So we have right now, again, we have one full-time administrative assistant in Indian Land, and we have a part-time year-round administrative assistant at Springdale. I put this in here because my next slide will actually tell you what we want to be. And then again, we have after-school coordinators, again, these are people that are, that are just, that are running our after-school program, and then they also work as, you know, pretty much the person that's bringing our summer camps as well, and seniors. So the senior person is the full-time position that's in Indian Land. So she does all of our senior programming through Indian Land. Now again, we have four recreation centers, but we have one person that is doing senior activities in Indian Land. I don't know if anyone else sees that as an issue. So, yeah, again, we're trying to provide quality. Can't do that if you're only doing, you're only serving one area in the county. So again, if we go down to our year-round part-time staff, same thing, you see, we have one person that is basically running Springdale, we have another person that is helping out, which they are an assistant over in Indian Land, and then those are the same staff members that are doing our after-school and summer camp. All right, so fun part, this is where I want to be. All right, so if you look at it, one of the things that we, we wanted to do was we actually repurposed two of our positions. Again, we haven't repurposed them, as, as in we actually did them, but this is where we would like to be. So we want to have those two administrative assistants that we have, we want to push those... those and make those into facility, assistant facility managers. That will also help us with two different things. One, from a programming, programming aspect, because we would like to program these recreation centers. What does that look like? Basically, making it more of a community center, they won't close at 6:00, when our after-school program is over. They will close at a reasonable time, such as a 9:00 or something like that. We can actually have karate classes, zumba classes, things of that nature in these recreation centers. We can actually invite more people from the public into these centers and actually do a lot more programming. You can have more meetings, more things like that. But again, these are two, two positions that we currently already have. The administrative assistant that is at Indianland is not field, so we would like to repurpose that position, and it's already a full-time position, so we would have that position be, again, be a assistant facility manager position. And then it will help, again, with staffing, and it'll help with, if this facility manager leaves, and when I say leaves, go on vacation, who's the person? We have no other full-time staff, who's running the sites?
Now, the, the additional hours and additional programming, is this something the rec department would be offering, or is it something that you would partner with somebody to do?
It would be a little bit of both. So we would actually, we would extend our hours, but we would bring in more vendors, and when I say vendors, teachers and things of that nature to help us facilitate that. And then some of them will be our staff that will be teaching them. Like, we want to do art classes, something of that nature. One of the things that I've actually challenged our staff with doing is picking something that they enjoy. So if a staff member enjoys art, they could be an art teacher. Now, when I say art teacher, we're not saying that they're going to be Picasso or anything like that, or Bob Ross, but they would definitely could, they could trace some lines, something like that. And then the next one is, we would like to have our full-time staff, just like we have one over at Indianland, we'd like to have another, add one staff member that will be at the Springdale location, because that's our second biggest center when it comes to after-school and summer camp. So that person would actually be running our after-school and summer camp, and it would be a full-time position versus a part-time position where it is currently. And then also, we would like to add our part-time, yeah, the site supervisors, we want to add two of those. And then if we go to administrative assistants, we would like to add one of those. And then the pool manager, that would be a new position, we would add that. Again, that pool manager will be the person that will manage our pool pretty much year-round, if you will, not really year-round, but more so when the off-seasons, they could actually come in and just help with making sure that the pool is still in good working order. And then we have the program activity leaders, so those positions, very simple, those are the more people that will help us with, well, with the, sorry, with our camps, so that, those people will help us with athletics in general. So they would actually be out there doing a lot more of those, hey, meet and greet parents, coaches, things of that nature. And it also takes some of the stress off of the full-time staff that is doing the same thing. And we could also serve more people. And then summer camp, obviously, we would probably increase those numbers just a little bit to be able to offer more. And then we have life cards.
Now, if, if we're able to add additional staff, not maybe all at the same time.
Right.
Please understand me. That will, that will allow us to provide additional services and reach additional constituents?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
We also feel like it'll, it'll allow us the opportunity to create more partnerships. And so while that is a lot of our role, but we also want to empower our staff at our centers to be able to go out and engage in their communities as well, because they're on the ground, they're out there, they need to be more engaged. And so by doing that, creating partnerships, whether it's in the Springdale area, the Indianland area, to then help bring people in, programs in, then it's a win for, for all of us. Right now, our managers are just running around without any, without any help, and it's hard to build consistency, right? And, and the other, just from, from an increase, you know, we talk about the athletic piece and wanting more staff for that, there's a whole other population that we don't even serve, and that's the teen population. Our program's cut off at 12. 13 to 17, 13 to 18, we have nothing for that population in this county. And that's something that we really need to give some hard thought.
Absolutely. I didn't think about that. Now, excuse me, Brian. Do we have anybody to recruit volunteers, like volunteer coaches and volunteer, somebody specifically?
Hell, Angie, another position, if you're asking for that.
Bye, bye, community.
You got the money, they can do it.
And if any of you want to help with that, spread the word in your districts, then feel free to. But actually, Mike Barnes.
Yes, that actually is not a bad idea. Like, we should be ambassadors to help support you all with those volunteer requests.
Yes, so we, we're chuckling, because this is something we just started talking about literally a few weeks ago. And so Mike Barnes, I know many of you know Mike.
And we all know Mike.
Mike is going to be helping kind of lead that a little bit and get out in the community. We're actually having volunteer sessions at some of our recreation centers this month to be able to give like an orientation overview to help recruit, explain what we're doing. Because while we need volunteers for coaching, we'd also like to do volunteers for, have, have a pool to pull from for special events, so it's not always having to pull all, all of our staff in. Or if we want to do park cleanups quarterly, or, or whatever the frequency is, we have, we have a group there that we can rely on, kind of like, keep, keep Lancaster beautiful, right? So there's a big opportunity to do that, and that's, that's going to be an initiative for this year and going forward.
I, I think it's a great idea to have a person in charge of volunteer schedules, how many you got. You know, I think some of us up here may be willing to work the concession stand, right?
Yeah, and if, if you were to kind of get a list of what those volunteer opportunities are and what your needs are, we could definitely.
It's already posted, I beat you to it, yes, sir. It's already online.
If you, if you can send that to us.
I'll do.
I know there are two communities in particular in the Indianland area, Treetops and Sun City, that potentially have a ton of individuals that would be happy to help.
Yes, sir, so we posted, so what we, again, with the initiative, we posted all of our volunteer opportunities up until, up until November. So we have everything for this, for basically until November, and those are all of our opportunity, our volunteer opportunities, and it tells you basically what you'll be doing, and then also the meetings are on there as well. So all of that stuff is on the rec desk on our website. So we've already posted it, but I'll definitely send you, send you all the link.
Notice there's banners at the Indianland on the fence now, I hadn't noticed those before. Are those special?
Those are for our sponsors. Yes, sir, that's to recognize sponsors during our basketball season right now. So part of the, the staff made the decision that the visibility would be better there on the fence line than as opposed to being in the gymnasium on the walls. And so it's similar to what we do at Walnut Creek, we, we line the ballfield fences during the spring season.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea. Like I say, I noticed, I've noticed it in the last, really in the last week or so, so, and it looked like it increased from the first time I noticed it to the second time, so keep those banners coming.
Chris, I got a question. We know, and you know, we won't be able to fund all of these at one time. I would like you to prioritize them to what you want first, you know, because we can't get all this at one time, we need to try to, we're going to help you, try to get you what you do need first, or second, or whatever. But looking at this, I see a lot of supervisors and administrators and different stuff, but I don't see maintenance. To me, is some of these going to roll up their sleeves and help a little bit on that end, or?
They are, so it's a couple of points there. So we actually just had a staff meeting this morning to talk about the budget a little bit, and we had the conversation about wants versus needs, and how we're going to have to prioritize things for next fiscal year. We have also tasked our Cliffs, Big Cliff and Little Cliff.
Yes, sir.
With.
That's right.
With having Cliff West on the maintenance side train our full-time athletic staff on field prep. So that it's not always on, you know, Cliff West guys to be dragging fields, lining fields, painting fields, that our athletic staff can jump in from time to time and help or if something happens at the last minute. So we're, we're working on other ways to do that. Yes, the maintenance staff needs to grow, but we're, again, prioritizing what we want, that, programs, so we, we've got some things to kind of still work through between now and March.
Good, okay, thank you.
All right, a couple more. Sorry, we're taking up so much time. This is a, a list of, well, actually, this is yours.
All right, so program goals for us, we kind of talked about it, I think it's, is it on there? It is not, I didn't put it on there. No, it is on there, yes, it is. Adult programming, what's that? Yes, kickball. Yes, sir. So we are working on trying to do a little bit more this year, well, that's a lot, a lot, a lot more this year, but we're, again, this is our three-year plan for our, our goals for our department. We would like to increase our senior programs across the board. We have a pickleball tournament that we're going to be doing this year, so that's a new thing that we're going to be doing. It's actually going to be a league that will turn into a tournament. So we, and we'll have two different age groups for that, and then also two different, was it, two different skill levels. So, again, just be on the lookout for that kind of stuff, we'll definitely keep you guys abreast of that. Adult programming, one of the things for us is we wanted to offer more adult programming. If you haven't known, we haven't actually been offering anything for quite some time. So, again, we challenged our athletic staff with doing more, so we actually repurposed one of our staff members that are currently in athletics to being over all of athletic, all of adult sports. So that way, that person can actually fixate on all of those, and he will help out on some of our youth sports as well. But right now, his goal is to basically uplift our, our adult sports. Teens, so like Chris mentioned earlier, one of the things that we're sorely lacking in is any type of teen programs. So we want to make sure that we are offering those, and we can work with the schools, as work, works with some, was it charter schools, and also work with some of those, what's the other one, the home, was it, the homeschoolers? So we can work with homeschoolers as well. But our goal is to try and, again, fix our teen program, or at least adopt something that would actually be beneficial for the teens in this area. And when I say in this area, I mean the entire county. Inclusive programs, obviously, we have the, the Dream Team partnership that we've already had a conversation with them, we're just trying to figure out exactly when they would like us to kind of take over. And, again, that's still something that we're, we're talking about. Now, we do have a staff member that is, he's certified, that's already on board, and he has extensive knowledge when it comes to inclusive programming, so he's going to be the person that's going to head that up. Again, our goal is to build a team, a strong team, that actually can do things to help us out in all aspects of recreation. And then also, one of the things that we're looking at is outdoor recreation, we don't capitalize on that. We have a lot of people that want to do fishing, we have people that want to do kayaking, canoeing, camping, that's one of the programs that I've set, sat down with our, with our special event coordinator, Mr., well, supervisor, Mr. Mike, and told him I want to do something with camping this year. Now, again, when we do camping, are we going in the woods, we going to Springs Park? Absolutely not. But we're going to do something different, they got a lot of needles out there, didn't we talk about that earlier? So we're going to wait on that, we're going to probably do something a little different, where basically we take the kids to one of our ballfields or something like that. And again, we're just going to be creative as of, for our first or second one, until we get to a point where we can actually do something a little different. But again, we want to utilize the spaces that we have currently, and, again, make people aware of them, because a lot of people don't know some of the things that we have. So we want to bring, bring that to the forefront, if you will. And then obviously, with the pool, we want to expand our learn-to-swim program, increase public swim hours, and then also increase more rentals when it comes to the pool.
But outdoor recreation, have you thought about the state parks?
As in?
Utilizing them for outdoor recreation for fishing, canoeing, and camping?
Oh, yes, sir. Well, we want to use our properties first, but yes, sir, we do want to use those as well. So if we have, if we have, obviously, capabilities of using other places, we want to, but the first thing we want to do is utilize those places that we have in the county first, and then we'll go somewhere else. Because again, we got Springs Parks and things like that.
Those are in the county.
Hey, if you had camping every weekend at, at Springs Park, you probably wouldn't have that needle problem.
We probably wouldn't.
We have a, we have a good opportunity there, I think, at Springs Park long-term, to kind of clean that up and, and put some perimeter camp. But I, an opportunity on the state side is, is really big, too, to, to try and create a relationship with the state parks, whether it's just for field trips, outdoor programs, there's something there that's completely untapped also, so list gets longer as the day goes by. Lots of good opportunities. All right, a couple more slides. Three-year department goals, kind of continued, roughly breaking this up, you know, this year, next year, in 2026. One of the requests is also going to be, we want to have a master plan for the county strategic plan, because our department has never had a master plan. We had the study by Clemson back in 2015, but that's not quite what we need from a master plan standpoint, to be thoughtful, to anticipate, to be more intentional about how we grow our department, the impact and the influence we can have in the county, both from a programming standpoint, economic development standpoint, there's a lot, I think, there that, that we can learn from and, and do. Playground, we've talked about, program offerings, we're obviously going to be looking to increase, sponsor program. Regional park ribbon cutting, we're looking at doing something in the fall.
I, I, that, the, I disagree with, the only thing I disagree, the regional park needs to be moved up to 25. We're just now getting into 24. If we can't build that in a year and a half, or whatever, we don't need to, we need, we don't need to do it, because, I mean, that's, that's 18 months.
We said ribbon cutting. We said ribbon cutting.
I'm talking about, he's got, he's got an open regional park in 26. I'd say open regional park in 25. That's a, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a year and a half.
We gotta go then, we gotta go.
The money's there, the money's approved. I don't see no reason why that can't be open next year.
December the 21st, 2025.
Yep.
Make it happen.
Make it happen.
Bippity boppity boo.
Yeah. That actually shouldn't be ribbon cutting, it should be groundbreaking for the fall of this year.
Groundbreaking.
Yes.
All right, well, we, we appreciate it. Yeah, one more.
I, I just think this was a great presentation. It gave me all the information I need to, to decide on where we go from here, and I thank you guys for that report.
We appreciate, we appreciate it, because y'all have a lot of different moving parts.
Well, Councilman Fomé, you didn't let them get to 2025 on their second bullet there. Grow revenue.
Grow revenue. There's a, there, there's a lot of potential for us to do more from a revenue standpoint, whether it's naming rights, sponsors, fees for field rentals, whatever it might be, there, there's a lot more there for us, I think, to grow with. We're, we are projected, well, our budget for this year in revenue is a million dollars, and we are at about $560,000 right now, so we're confident we're going to surpass the million-dollar revenue mark this year, so I don't see any reason why we couldn't, we can't target 1.5 as a, as a growth number for, for what we're trying to do. And then that la, the last bullet there, just, you know, Buford and AJ, they basically operate as after-school program centers right now. We'd like to really make them more community centers, so they're accessible during the day, in the morning, for the community to come in and have, whether it's open gym, walking programs, any kind of classes, whatever the, whatever the case may be, it's our asset, we need to find better ways to use it. It goes back to staffing, which wants versus needs, but this is a goal for, for 2025, is to, is to get Buford and AJ operating a little bit more in line with Indianland and Springdale.
That's good. All right.
And then, last slide, promise. Bit of a budget preview, which we've talked about a lot of this, these are full-time requests, you know, we've touched on them as far as what we're looking for, you know, some other numbers would be more on the part-time side with working weekend coverage, supporting athletics, so we're flushing all that out right now. From an operations standpoint, you know, having, as I, as I touched on, a line for playground maintenance, playground renovations, we'd like to resurface some of our tennis courts, Walnut Creek is one, but a couple of them could use it. And then possibly trying to do something with the parking situation out at Heat Springs. While we have the new lots there that have, that have helped our overflow, we'd like to try and actually convert them into more permanent parking lots. And then obviously, the master plan funding. So this is just a bit of an overview of what we're going to be working on to present to y'all beginning of March.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And before, before they step away, one, if you've never played bubble soccer, or seen bubble ball, I don't know if you have a picture of those, but that's a great new innovation they brought to the county. But also, they've been working well, I want to make sure council knows, they've been[1728.53] to make sure council knows, they've been working well with the advisory board, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. They've been bouncing. You see a lot, I hopefully got from this presentation, forward thinking, thinking about offering services different, what more can we do to maximize what we have, and not just say, hey, we need more, we need more, but trying to maximize what we have. But also, the advisory board, at your next meeting that did not get held because of weather last night, but they're having a conversation about concealed weapons. And so, that will be articulating whether or not we can have concealed weapons on county parked land. It will be addressed, there's an answer, but it needs to be addressed in their meeting. But, I want you to hear that they're thinking about operational things, they're working on programs and things. The board's a little bit more focused on some other things. And so, the advisory board's going to have a conversation about concealed weapons. So, anything you need to add from the advisory board topics?
No, I don't think so. They've been generally very positive and supportive and, and have been a good group to work with. I would just, really quick, two things. So, Councilman Luis, the quick numbers that we received for the annex, about a capacity of about 150. So, we'll, we'll get a more firm number as we get closer to construction and see what, you know, what will be approved for.
150 for both rooms?
Together, 75 each side. Yeah. And then, the knockerball piece. If you want to come out and see what knockerball is and see how it works, the 19th, 19th of January, Buford is doing their jacket pride day, and so, they have asked for our knockerball setup to come down so that the teachers can do a little, team building, I guess, in front of the students. So.
When is that?
19th.
19th of this month.
So, what is bubble soccer?
How do we do a Google search real quick?
Bubble soccer is, is basically a large inflatable ball that you get in, almost like a book. Get in, put your shoulders in, and there are harnesses or handles here. And then what you do is you're playing soccer, because your feet, your bottom half is out. So, you're playing soccer with a traditional soccer ball, if you will, or an inflated soccer ball.
It's awesome.
The goal is for you to bump other people, but you're in a bubble. So, when you bump them, typically, you fly.
It's awesome. I'm like, I'm all in.
World ever thought of that.
Chips, all in.
All right, let's, let's keep our meat moving so we can get out of here. We, we get into Ms. Harden's time.
That should be, that should be a council team, that should be a council team building event.
Don't wait.
Some of us are going to need big bubbles. All right, next, we have Ms. Harden, Ms. Allison Harden. She's going to give us an update on storm water erosion control and tell us how we handle two and a half inches of rain in four hours.
Very carefully. It's just not as much fun up here talking about stormwater after bubble soccer. I don't ever want to follow them again. I want them to sweep up after me and make it all happy. Sorry.
Hey, with all, with all this rain we had, you got mudslides written all over the county, you know?
That's true, writ large. All right, I have slides, as usual. This is on your agenda because we wanted to talk about stormwater issues. Before, this was all planned out before yesterday's events. It's just a timing convenience. But, we do have some serious issues in the county on stormwater runoff and erosion issues. And so, because we're getting into the, the section where we're going to be talking about the UDO in a couple of months, and the comp plan is coming up, we want to talk about stormwater and erosion issues in the county, and some things that we can do to address those, things that we could add into the UDO, things that we can add into a long-term plan for the comp plan and the like. And these are some suggestions and some review points that have come up, not just from the staff, but also from developers and other people outside of the staff. So, I want, because this is also a public meeting, it's on the public's agenda and public can watch, I'll be talking about some terms that I wanted to make sure everybody knew what I was talking about. So, I wanted to put them up on the screen and just do a quick overview on those. When I talk about compaction, we're talking about pressing down on soil so that air pockets between the particles of, of soil, or between the grains of soil, are reduced and/or eliminated. We talk, you think about when you have a really big piece of clay when you were a kid, and you squish it and the water comes out. The tighter that you make the clay, the, the more water, the more resistant it is to absorbing more water. So, compaction talks about getting all the air pockets out of the ground before we build. Stabilization is a official term, comes in through the DEHEC regulations, after your soil disturbance is complete, and soil disturbance happens when you're getting ready to build on any project. At least 70% of the exposed soils, after you've done your groundwork, they have to be covered with vegetation to a uniform density. This is to help keep the soil in place and help keep, prevents future soil failure, and it's something that our staff has to review and evaluate, and will sometimes turn down permits because it's not done either properly or completely. House pads, we'll talk about pads, that's the area underneath your foundation. Before your house is built, the pad or the area where your house is going to be built has to be prepared properly. That's called the house pad. The rails and things we'll talk about when we're looking at some of the, the erosion pictures, there are small shallow channels, places where water goes. If you think about it, when you're building a beach sand castle and you've got, you know, loose sand, and you pour water down, sand goes, water goes everywhere, because the sand is not stabilized into a channel. It'll form its own channel. Rails are small channels that are formed in the soil here when water is going and the soil is not stabilized. So, the soil gets to move around as it wants. They start out as small, slow channels. They can get into what's called gullies. You ever heard of a gully washer? A gully is what's remaining after a big, big flood, when you have a larger, deeper channel that's coming down the hill. And then, fill, we talk about fill being any kind of dirt or rock material that's brought onto a construction site from somewhere else. It's often used to increase the ground height. If you think about it, when you have a piece of property that's below the, the road level, looking at that property, you can, you can notice it, but the water that's coming from the road has the opportunity to come down any hill. Some people will use fill or extra dirt or rocks from other places to bring the level of their building pad up, so it's above the road, so they don't get road flooding in their yard. It's also used to help stabilize foundations and to support other building operations.
Just to let you know, gullies were a part of our playground activities when I was a kid.
Absolutely.
We had lots of them on our farmland.
Yep, mine, too. Looked for the gullies to make the best mud pies. You get the good soft dirt in the bottom. So, the types of issues that staff found, we found many issues. I'm only going to give you a sample of them through this. We found erosion, both on house pads and on slopes. We found issues with retaining walls blowing out, places where fill was not matched correctly, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that when we get to that picture. And then, sinkholes. All of these are related to issues that come from not having properly compacted or properly prepared sites. So, the picture you see on the screen, there's two of them. One on the left shows you house pads. Those are future house pads. As you can see, the steps going on, each one of those would be a, a pad, and those already have rails because of erosion issues. You can see how there's little channels coming down the side. Those are places where the soil's not been stabilized, and that's where water's running down and creating its own channelization. It's not a, it's not a good sign. You want those to be solid before you start building. On the right-hand side, you can see a repaired slope stabilization from a slope failure, that it was, part of the reason that it's failed is because the, the ground cover that is required to stabilize a slope has to be vegetation, but the, the person in this project used pine straw. Pine straw floats, pine straw flows away very quickly. And the, the plants that are planted there were new and not, and not planted in a way, or not old enough to sufficiently stabilize the slope. So, they had to go in and repair that. Another picture of slope issues, you've got poor compaction leads to unstable soils, so that the water is able to create its own channel. That's getting closer to a gully, more than a rail, on the left-hand side, and then on the right-hand side. Another slope failure with rails and gullies coming down. At the very top, it's very, it's hard to see, but there's fencing around the top where the neighborhood, neighborhood boundary stops. And this one in particular, this is pretty scary. This was a slope was not properly maintained through the construction process, and it was compromised, came very close to leading to the house falling down and the deck as well. This is something that our stormwater department answered the call for this. The, the failure actually went much further down in the slope here, all the way down to the creek. But, for brevity's sake, I've kept it just to the one picture. For poor compaction, compaction, again, remember, we're going to try and get the, the soil really tight. Improper compaction happens not only during the original parts, but sometimes the developers, the people that are doing the groundwork can do a really good job of compaction. But, when other folks come in afterwards to dig utilities or to build the construction, and they don't end up with the right compaction, you have things like on the left, where you have a exposed trench wall for, for a pipe there. And on the right-hand side, this is a commercial project where improper compaction allowed the water to flow through and had, resulted in a blowout of that retaining wall. On the right-hand side, near where the black netting is, there is an actual hole that, where the, the soil is going out of the wall and down the side. Incorrect compaction can also lead to things that may seem to be just aesthetics, like this fence going down on the left-hand side, but that fence folding over is a sign that there's going to be more impact to come. And so, you try and get that stabilized sooner than, rather than later. Another example of slope blowing out of retaining wall, you can see that there's a railing for the top of a neighborhood on the right-hand side, but there is a hole just below the railing where that orange area is going. And those, those cement blocks have been blown out by the power of the water and the pressure of the soil. Mother Nature will move things. When she's ready, she's ready. And that was one of those where, because it wasn't compacted properly, the water got into that area and was able to create that issue. Unmatched fill also is a problem. So, when we talk about mixing soils together and compacting them, different types of soils have different types of shapes. Their little molecules are, or sand grits and the like, they have different shapes, and not all of them mix well together. So, you have to have the right type of fill to blend in at the natural point where the grade is. And if you don't, then you can get this, where you have two types of fill, and there's a, a gully going through the middle of that, because it just wasn't properly applied.
All these are in Lancaster County?
Yes, yes. I wouldn't dare go out somewhere else. No, 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 these are things that we got to fix.
Are they all north of five?
Yes.
And, and I've got another observation. Are you, are you really surprised you see this because of the way that we slash and burn the environment? We, we, we cut all the trees down, we move all the dirt around, and we have heavy rains. What do you expect to happen? And we do all this filling and grating.
I have some thoughts on that. Happy to talk to you after the meeting. But, one of the things that does come from when you take the trees down, the requirement after you've taken trees down is you have to go back in and prepare the ground. And one of the things we'd like to do is add in a regulation to our UDO that allows our staff to make sure that happens properly. Right now, we just don't have that.
Or, don't take all the trees down.
That, too. We can use that as part of it. I'm going to add that to my list. I'm going to write it in red pen.
Please add that.
Yes. Tree protection, I'm all about it. I'll hug a tree all day long.
Well, it's, it's not even about that. It's, it's a preventative measure that avoids the issues that you're talking about.
Yes, you're talking to the right person. I just spent two years studying under an arborist about what trees absorb the most water, are the most friendly for floodplains and wetland areas, and...
Willows, river birches, maples.
Live oaks.
Yep.
American hop hornbeam.
Yep.
Fantastic, fantastic.
We're on the same page.
Speaking of trees, there's a tree in that hole. The neighbor went to plant a tree, and the sinkhole is now nine foot, and the tree fell to the bottom of that hole.
That lady came before county council.
And then, sinkholes don't just impact residential areas and their, and residential uses. It also comes into our neighborhoods and our infrastructure. This is a, an example of where a lack of compaction and an incomplete fill made a sidewalk unstable, and that becomes then not just an issue about compaction, it's a public safety now. Not that the others weren't, but this is more direct to a public safety issue. So, what can we do about this? Some of the things that we're talking about as a group, about adding to the UDO or adding to the comprehensive plan, it doesn't say trees on here yet, but that's okay. It will after the, after today. Any other comments will be trees bound. Add compaction inspection to the development codes. Right now, we do have a compaction requirement. We are required that anybody that comes forward with a permit gets a report on compaction. But, what we don't have is a staff member that is qualified to read the report and identify any concerns or identify any areas that need to be watched. We also don't have somebody that's qualified to go out there and measure the density of that compaction. And that would be something that would be helpful in our, in our, in going forward to making the community more stable. When you build houses, you hope that they're going to last 30, 50, maybe even 100 years or more. This would go a long way to making sure that those homes stay stable and viable for your constituents. We want to make sure that we have the safest route possible and leave a good legacy. We also could add localized flood areas to the floodplain regulations. The flood maps that we have for regulation that are received from FEMA are the base bare minimum that are required to be followed through. We can add our own information to those maps and increase the level of building review for areas that we know are in local flood areas. We can identify our own local flood areas and add that to ours as a higher standard. But, we don't even have to wait for FEMA to redo the map for that. And if you wait for FEMA to redo the map, I love them to pieces, but they have, you know, hundreds of thousands of other communities to deal with. And we are one out of 46 counties in the state, and our turn rolls around as our turn rolls around. When, the, the community I used to work in Myrtle Beach, we had an update in 1998 and the next one in 2015. That was a lot of development years, especially with the Air Force Base being developed in that timeframe. You can't...
I guess that would have eliminated that house we saw the picture of yesterday that had to water up almost to the second floor.
Well, one thing I want to point out about FEMA rules is that it doesn't say, don't build here. It says, build carefully here. And so, it might have required it to be elevated so that the water would go under the house and the...
That wasn't even in a floodplain. It just happened to be where all the drainage went to.
Right. So, if we were able to identify the areas where we have drainage issues already because of either historic knowledge or because of topographic information, we could add that to the building code and say, if you're building in this area, we know there's going to be some floods, build more carefully here. And here's the extra set of rules you have to follow. The one thing that it will not impact is the requirement for flood insurance. If you're in a special flood hazard area that's identified on a FEMA flood insurance rate map, you have to get flood insurance. It doesn't have to be federally backed, but it's much more affordable. Outside of those areas, we could still have higher standards, but that person wouldn't be required to get insurance on that for their mortgage. It would just be a local higher standard. But, that's an option. And then, long-term options that we've brainstormed, expanding stormwater view to the rest of the county. I know this is a topic where we've had that Indian Land pays for the stormwater stuff up there, okay. But, if we add in stormwater staff out of the regular coffers and give them the assignment of the rest of the community, we could possibly have a quicker review, and we could be more tied into those issues that would give us a heads-up that we're having flood problems. Right now, DEHEC has one reviewer for construction review when they have to come in, because they have to come in and check stabilization if we don't. And it's one reviewer for four counties. And you're in, pardon, seven?
Seven.
Seven counties. Seven counties. And they just hired them, and they're coming back, they're coming in to work on February 2nd.
I, I don't want to throw cold water on your, your proposal, but what you're talking about is you've got the Indian Land area that's paying for their stormwater now, and now you're asking those same residents to subsidize stormwater in other areas.
Actually, my proposal is not to do that at all. My proposal is to incorporate stormwater review at a, at the level, not at an MS4 level necessarily, but at a beginner level for the rest of the county, out-of-county funds. Just having, it would be a person that would be under the Development Services Division, but wouldn't be paid for by Indian Land funds. It would come out of the regular budget.
Yep, but Indian Land residents are paying those taxes into the budget, so in essence, they're subsidizing a, a good chunk of that salary.
That, that's not going to be, that's not going to be fair or equitable.
No, and, and I, I've heard you many times on this topic, on this, so I really wanted to try and focus in on how to address that. So, obviously, my idea needs some work to figure out how to make sure that...
The idea is that the stormwater should, fee should be all over the county.
Well, I didn't say about a stormwater fee. I talked about stormwater review.
I know, but you...
You can add that later, but stormwater review in particular...
And the stormwater review should be done in Indian Land as well, and the stormwater fee should be drastically reduced.
Stormwater review is done in Indian Land, and they do a fantastic job, and...
But, residents are paying for it.
Yes, the residents are paying for the programming up there.
If the county's going to pay for it, the stormwater review needs to be done in Indian Land, out of the coffers, if that's what's going to be done in the whole county.
I see your point. Okay, good. Yes, I definitely need more work on this project idea. But, thank you for that. I'll take that, I'll take that note. We also could require higher construction standards for roads and bridges. Right now, we have, all of the development of, of roads in the county is held to the 25-year storm, which is a entry-level storm for review. Having bridges and, bridges and roads go up to the... Having bridges and bridges and roads go up to the 50-year standard for construction would provide an extra level of elevation for roads so that evacuations could be had. There would be fewer roads topped over by floodwaters and potentially help with increase the safety of the community that they're in. And then bringing resilience programming to the county. This is a very big item topic that resilience programming focuses in on design, building, and and siding to reduce impacts from hazards. It reduces drain damage from flooding and it meets or exceeds the new long-term planning requirements from the state. The state has recently added a resiliency element to the comprehensive plan requirements. It's tied to the South Carolina Office of Resiliency and the discussions about the flood flood, shoot, can't just lost the term, is a fund that's tied to it as well for insurance. And we could be ahead of the game on that. You just happen to have a subject matter expert in the office on resiliency. So I'm happy to provide that information to you. But those are some of the ideas that we came up with for short and long term. I bring that to you as a review, not to do any action today. Definitely, I know where to go from here on some notes and rethink one of the items and to add the trees. Terrence is here as well. He's our stormwater director, not the not the superintendent, but the stormwater director. And he is, and he has
So I got, so so what what is what is the stormwater department doing to reduce the erosion problems that we just saw?
They're working hard to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Well, tell me how.
How? By enforcing the B and P measures that we receive on every project. Like Allison just mentioned, currently, we're allowing more than 25 acres to be cleared. So if you allow more than 25 acres to be cleared, it's, yes, sir.
Well, people are clearing more than 25 acres, but I was thinking about it, but it's really south of five because it's on Riverside Road, they cleared 300 acres.
And that is outside of ours jurisdiction, like you told Allison, we stay up in the Indian land area above the Panhandle. So below the Panhandle, we can't control that.
Understand, well, yeah, and I have a, I have an opinion that that should be in the stormwater area. Go ahead, I'm distracted.
I just work here, don't make the call.
That's his opinion.
Yes. So everything above the Panhandle, as we took Councilman Lewis out, yourself and Councilman Carnes out, you've seen some of the things that we're trying to educate the developers for one, and two, get our inspectors better equipment and resources so that we can look at things and we can control it before it gets out of control. Now, when you have a heavy rain event, only thing you can do, wait for that to be over with, and then work with the developers to improve those B and P measures.
Yeah, but we should be doing things anticipating those heavy
Yes, yes, we do, we do.
Like sell fences and not allowing them to have these big expanses of open dirt and also
Now, you gotta, you gotta also remember, as you look at B and P measures, when we talked about it, when you have a check dam that's rip, that's washed on, so every fence is allowed 20% turbidity. So now, how does the state define turbidity? I can't tell you, even with my degree. 20% turbidity means that there will be some turbidity coming off the site, as long as we don't allow sediment off the site. So basically, when you see a heavy rain event, the water is colored, but that's turbidity in the water. If you see a lot of mud on the road, then we have sediment on the road. Just like yesterday, if you look throughout the Indian land area, you saw turbidity going throughout the area, but today it's clear. So turbidity is something different from sediment. Turbidity is just those fine particles that move along.
I've got a couple of questions, so
Sure.
Because we we definitely drove through some of these sites and the soil compaction issues were significant because we had several trucks that got stuck there. So how long have these issues been going on?
Prior to us becoming department in 2018.
Okay.
We are further along
For a long time.
Yes, sir.
And then, one of the things that I know we talked about is it's great to have all of these ordinances and all of these requirements, but how do we give the staff the ability to enforce them and so it has teeth as opposed to just being something that's written on paper and not worth the paper it's written on?
We make it a requirement before they can go to the next step of the permit that it has to be done. We can definitely put in parts of the permit review where you don't get to phase three of your of your process until you pass by phase two cleanly.
And that's great. That's helpful for developers that can withstand having that amount of time and just sitting around. But for developers that are not financially strong, what options do we have? Because all that can do is say, your project is going to be on hold for a certain period of time. There's got to be some fines, there's got to be some other measures that are tied with these ordinances that ensures that these problems are not only addressed quickly, but that are addressed in a timely manner.
Right. The, that's part of the reason we said, under the idea is that we need staff to, a staff person that has that qualification, that can be dedicated just to that focus. It's not about adding in a rule and letting the existing staff be overworked. It's about adding in a rule and adding in a person into the U D O that has that authority to do that, so that there's fewer delays, because the delays are real for sure, but they're even more so outside of the the Indian land area when you have to wait for the state. It's not negative on the state, they're just also understaffed, very much so. So we have, that's in the the stormwater ordinance reviews that we talked about earlier in the year near March when I came in, we are still working from that draft to hopefully put something in the new U D O with that.
And are there any impact fees that we could implement to help support some of these costs?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So that, I would love to see that as part of the overall ordinance and kind of what we need to do to, again, give you the resources that you all need as a result of the impact that these developments are having. And then my final question is, do we have any consistent issues with certain developers?
If we do, I'd like to take that to a conversation with our administrator and maybe our attorney.
Yeah.
And and we'll be happy to talk to you about that with them.
Okay.
The utilities like Water and Sewer and Duke Energy or York Electric or whatever, do they require compaction on their
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
They are, they are tested. Do we get those results?
We do get their information that's sent back up in their plan. So they go through the same stormwater review like like a developer would. And we we would review it, and once they start to get their permit, and at the end of their permit, we would have to inspect their site, and they still would be under the same regulation as a developer, even their contractors as well.
A problem that I'm a small, that we all have is, even though those lines are put in, we have to run the services to the houses and and then we go across the power lines and we create issues.
One of the bullet points on my slide here is that groundwork is sometimes done by different contractors than builders, and builders sometimes disturb the groundwork knowingly and not repair. And then the road infrastructure and utilities are not installed at the same time. So you can have somebody go in because there is a delay in in getting the water and sewer set up, somebody will go in and build the roads because they're to the point they need to go ahead and keep moving. And then we have to, someone, another contractor comes back in and adds in the water and sewer lines, and that can upend the the compaction that was done by the original developer. And so we do have some issues in the timeline of when development occurs that we've identified. Some of them are pretty much out of our control, but we still want to evaluate how we're doing it and what we can do to make it better. And we have meetings set up to do that.
Mr. Ross Deller has a question. To me, with all these issues north of five, with these big developments and stuff, why can't we hold these developers, make them responsible? They know these subcontractors is going to come in and doing all this other digging and moving. But at the end of the day, that developer is responsible for it. I mean, to to me, why couldn't we make them put up a bond to issues down the road? These people's yards start sinking or whatever, they got, you know, they've got some money they can back up. We've done something like that in Sun City with the roads and sidewalks. Y'all remember that? That they had to go in on it and take some of the money to make repairs in there where it was washing out and stuff. That was done for through a developer. So to me, that that would hold them accountable for a period of time, give us time to settle and see if we're going to have any issues, you know. And that's the only way I can do it is is make the developer, end to end, you the guy that's responsible for all of it.
One of the things that the staff already does when they have, when they've identified some of these situations is they will send out a letter with a stop work order attached. The code does allow them to do a stop work order, and nothing else can happen on that project until the issue is resolved. But the idea of bonding furthermore, right now, we just bond infrastructure, being roads, asphalt, curb and gutter, street trees and sidewalks. It would take us expanding that into covering stormwater issues so we can evaluate that. I know that's something we have said often in the past that we don't do, but I don't know that, I don't quite know the exact reason for why. So let's look into that and bring that to you.
That's what we're having more of our issues at is, you know, the
I think Mr. Ross Deller's idea is a great idea because I I've been to a number of residents and, you know, once that developer is out of the community and five years down the road when this problem happens, they've washed their hands of it, or they're going to point and say, well, it was a grading contractor. Well, the grading contractor's gone bankrupt and, you know, there's nobody there. And then the homeowner is just stuck making repairs that they shouldn't have to make.
I've seen them develop LLCs, so they do each project under a different LLC, and they they drop that LLC when the project is done and so
Called single purpose entities. Yep.
So the, I just recalled while we were sitting here thinking that the reason, part of the reason we don't do stormwater bonding upfront is because that actually needs to happen before they they do the structure. So things like the vegetation cover, the 70%, the stabilization, that needs to be done before the building, not left to a later time. But if you're talking about bonding, things like the slopes that are left in open space and the other areas along the roadways, we can talk about that for sure. And I'll talk with Terrence and Wilson.
I mean, there's a significant issue with foundations cracking in houses. I mean, that's a huge issue.
Yes.
I would consider fines and per diems and things like that as liquidated damages.
The foundation cracks, the the staff had already identified that and had pictures in there. I didn't bring them out because I didn't want to personally identify anyone's house. But that is another reason why compaction is important, because if you're not compacted and the soil starts settling, then the foundation
But I don't know that the county wants to put its seal of approval on a compaction issue on a on a pad.
I don't know either.
Because that's a big liability.
The the compaction report, though, comes from a scientist that has a has the ability to do
Yeah, they do that, I know they do that.
And if we have someone that has the same requirement fulfilled, that has the ability to look at it and say, yeah, I see what you're doing, or no, I see that you've slipped something or missed something here, then we have a better leg up. But we have that all the time. We have building inspectors that inspect buildings that are built by architects that our building inspectors aren't architects. They're not licensed to go out and build a building, but they're licensed to review the how the building is put together.
Well, I know that in Sun City, there was a firm in Columbia that put their seal on and they got sued.
Yeah, they, I mean, when they 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 come check the compaction, the concrete is poured the next day because, you know, you're you're beating, you're constantly beating the rain.
Or if it if it rains a lot after they've checked the compaction, it changes.
Yeah.
And as developers try to hurry through processes, we've also come up with areas where the concrete was poured in a, either in a wrong temperature or in the wrong manner. But that also leans a little bit more into the building code side of things. So the idea is that the Development Services Department has come up with in general, both from stormwater and zoning and from building and planning, we're putting all this into work and we've start, we've got a meeting set on the 30th that we're going to start having meetings to talk bigger ticket items as we're coming into making the final changes on
And I predict that these things you're seeing will be south of five also.
Oh, yes.
They don't, they don't mysteriously stop at Highway five.
No, they don't. There were pictures in
Part of the problems they had at Sun City is they hauled a lot of fill in from outside the community and it did not compact well.
Well, they didn't do that, they cut down. And that type of soil, Terrace probably knows that that type of soil is a clay soil that expands and contracts, is not good for compaction.
And all developers know the standards far soils, because that's part of what we're receiving our SWIP, and we look at calculation, it tells you which soil is in the area. The issue was prior to us reviewing it before 2018 was, and you mentioned Sun City, no one was looking at what soil was being brought in. And that's what Allison is trying to tell you now. We still got to have someone to be able to determine what was brought in to show that it's proper compaction. Because I, just like they talk about sports, he could bring 100 soccer balls, and he bring 100 basketballs, we put them in a glass, they're not going to fit properly. You release one, the rest of them is going to fall. So that's what we're dealing with, basically with compaction.
Yeah, and the soil type that's there.
Yes.
It's not, it's not, yeah, I mean, it's just not there. It's not, it's not suitable for that.
Go ahead.
Thank you for the ideas. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you. So are we ready to go on to the comprehensive timeline? Oh, look, I can do this quickly. How about that?
You got about negative five minutes.
I got negative five minutes? All right. So quick, quick review, this started in 2021 with a baseline review. Local subject matter experts were just discussed it with the contractors. We had a 23-question survey, community survey, over 2,000 people responded. We had drop-ins with in both the Panhandle and Lancaster and Heath Springs. We had key topic forums near the end of 2022. We had meetings that discussed agriculture and natural resources. Those were in Kershaw. We had economic development discussions in Lancaster. We had land use and management, growth management discussions at University of South Carolina at Lancaster, and transportation discussions in the Panhandle. Currently, at near the end of 2023, we talked about, we did reviews, updates, we continued outreach, we aligned our, we made sure that the alignment with the strategic plan was in place. And so if you need a map to show you where you are, hey, here we are. We are here. We're at 2024, we are very close to the end. We're in the online input section of the review to recall the vision and guiding principles that lead us into this. Lancaster County respects and celebrates its diverse communities, and it continually plans for the future, protects the environment, promotes healthy lifestyles, and provides exemplary services for its residents as using the guiding principles. How we're doing this is a little bit different than a lot of comprehensive plans I've been involved with in that because the public had interests that were different from region to region, our comprehensive plan is also going to be handled from region to region. We're going to have a section that covers the county as a whole, but we're also going to have a section that covers topics that are specific to the Panhandle, topics that are specific to greater Lancaster, and topics that are specific to southern Lancaster. They may be the same topics. Transportation may be the topic that ties all of them together, but there's going to be a different issue with transportation in the Panhandle than there is in southern Lancaster County. So those are going to be handled separately. Then what's next is we're having public input meetings, and I'm happy to announce that they are open to the public. We have three of them. We're coming to the public, coming out to the community to make sure that they have, to lower a barrier to attending the meeting. We'll be on January 23rd, we'll be in southern Lancaster at the Kershaw Library, Kershaw Branch of the County Library. On January 29th, we'll be across the street at the Historic Courthouse here in Lancaster. And on January 30th, we'll be at the Dell Webb Library in the Panhandle. This is the last public opportunity for input before we take this document to the final public review with the Planning Commission and bring it to you, hopefully in March, for final review. All input up till January 30th will be considered and be added in where appropriate. And if anybody wants to look at the document and see if they see what they like, it is several, it's a couple hundred pages. However, it's very well divided so that you can get through to your point easily. That's www.lancaster2040, that's number two. That's www.lancaster2040, that's number two, number zero, number four, number zero, dot com. How's that?
Did you want to highlight our joint meeting?
Pardon me? Yeah, we also have a joint meeting, please, and thank you for agreeing to be there. We'll see you on Tuesday. I will be moderating the discussion. We'll be in a circle of tables down here on the floor, everybody at the same place, and we'll talk about the county in general, then we'll talk about the three different areas. We're specifically gonna look at the action items that are, that are recommended in the plan to see how you feel about them, to see if they, you think that they meet the target goals for your area that you represent, and to catch for any other additional items you'd like to see included.
Thank you, Ms. Harden. It's 6:00. 6:00, I can have a motion adjourned. Motion for Mr. Mosteller. I have a second for Mr. ...
Second.
Second, Mr. Carnes. All in favor, raise your right hand. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Steve, for your...